Good evening and welcome to the City Council's Special Session, Meeting of February 20th, 2024. There are four, well, actually not four, there are four items on the agenda, but a lot of, a lot of different lines. First of these is a discussion regarding film-friendly certification for the city of Norman. Ms. Sarah Capel.
Well, that's just me. Ashlyn's gonna present too. And thank you for whoever put me first on the agenda. I appreciate that, guys. So we talked about this with Baca a long time ago, and I think we're ready to make it real. So as you guys may remember, I don't know if everyone was there when we talked about it with Baca, but Visit Norman kind of started this process, and they're gonna be the primary point of contact for this film-friendly certification. And they've already kind of done all the groundwork on submitting site locations and all of that with the, okay, Commerce Department runs the film certification process. So the final step is for the city to create a permit. They didn't know that when they first started the application. We didn't know that either. So in order to create a permit, we have to update some ordinance language, which Ashlyn will talk about in a minute. And what we decided to do was go through the special event permit process. There's a lot of similarities between what would be required for a film production versus what's required for a special event, things like street closures, police presence, fire present, you know, all those kind of things, a lot of similarities. But what I realized is you guys probably haven't seen like the film or the special event process. If I can do this. So we have a little, just a little video. This is on the city's website. You can go through the steps on how to apply for a special event permit. It has all the steps in there. I need to edit this a little bit because we've had some changes, because some of you know that we launched the CityView online permitting tool back in November. So I haven't quite updated this because I was gonna update, make a whole bunch of updates when we get the film permit going. So all that information, if you guys want to learn more about that, it's on the city's website under Host a Special Event. So I'm not gonna walk through all of the steps, but let's see here. When you are applying for a special event, you'll now create a profile in CityView. These are all the different types of things you can apply for in CityView, and I know several of our departments have been working really hard to get that launched and going. It's hopefully great. But special events is one of those. So you'd go to that page on the website, the portal, and there's multiple links on the website on how to get to the different portal pages. But the special event permit process as standing already asks you all the things, date and time, site preparation, location, street closures, noise, vendors and food trucks, and tents, and temporary structures, and all of the things you could possibly think of. And so what we're planning on doing is just adding a couple of extra questions related to film. So on the portal, and there's a little video here, this is kind of, because a lot of you guys probably haven't seen this because you probably haven't made an application for a special event. Most people haven't. It's still really new. So you'll log in, and it will say, you'll say, okay, I want to apply for an event, and it's gonna ask you a whole bunch of questions. We've been kind of testing it with some of our current special event organizers over the past couple of weeks, and they assured me it wasn't as bad as I thought. I warned them it was going to be. So we've gotten a few of them through the process. So you'll go through, you'll select an event. I recorded this because I knew a live demo would never work out well. Can't talk and do it. So Events, and then once you type in what your event, yada, 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 you're gonna type in your social event, and then it's gonna ask you all of these great questions, only the first of which are required. You're stuck, fake festival, you like that? So you're gonna put in some dates. Oh my gosh, we gotta get this festival through. It's gonna start this weekend. Okay, so it's gonna ask you a whole bunch of questions. Yeah, like a lot of questions. Sorry, I could probably speed this up. But one of the questions we're gonna add is, is this a film? And if, or a film production? And if you say yes to that, then it's gonna ask the questions we need about film. And then you're still gonna answer all these other questions about street closures, and is it a tent show? Is it a carnival? Is it all of these things? So I'm gonna skip forward on that because it just goes through all that. So anyway.
Sarah, just a question. What happens if it's a music video and it's music and film?
That's a question on there, too.
Okay, good.
We can handle that. So we're gonna add this question in with CityView. I'm gonna sit down with the computer programery, programery people, which is not me, and we're gonna add this question. And if they say yes, then all of these next questions are gonna come into play. So your film or project name, the type of production, so is it a student film, a music video, a commercial, a, you know, an indie film, a full, so all of these different questions on there. You can check as many of those boxes as applies to your production. That will be a question. The next question is like the company information, local office, office if you have one, production company, your location, like your local site manager, who's the person we call if we have an issue, all of that information. This is kind of more the economic impact questions. Doesn't exactly affect what we need to do in terms of services for them, but it's nice information to have and know. We've, I attended a workshop with the Commerce Department last month, and some of the things that they were talking about, I hadn't even thought about, like shopping at your local antique stores to buy props, and just lots of impact. Then the additional question, like all the weird things that might come into play, are you gonna have like fireworks or pyrotechnics? Or is there gonna be like fake gunshot, like things that we need to know about so that like if citizens see like a random gunfight down Main Street, they know that it's a film production and not something we actually need to call 911 for? So all of those kind of questions, we pulled these pretty much directly off of film permits from other cities. So you can check any of those. And then if you're doing like a drone or have some large vehicles, you'll need to be parking somewhere, we're just kind of asking all of those questions in that part. And then I'm gonna let Ashlyn take over and talk about the ordinance part.
Just a copy of the track changes version of what I've gone in to update the ordinance. It might look like a lot, but really it's mostly boiling down to grammar inconsistency changes, and there's really only three substantive areas we would change to implement the film permit. So the first substantive change would be adding language to the definitions to just account for the addition of the film permit. The next would be, where's that section? Twenty three zero five, second page, essentially kind of just saying there's going to be an additional part to the special events permit that is specifically for film permit that you'll have to fill out and complete in order to do so. And here is kind of a big area we're needing some feedback on, is whether or not we want to have a fee associated with the film permit. The special event itself does not have a fee, but additional noise variance, street closures, those do have attached fees. Other cities do not have. Most of the smaller municipalities don't have fees associated. Tulsa does thirty to two hundred, I think, depending on lots of different specifications. Broken Arrow, Oklahoma City, twenty-five. I think that's it. Yeah.
So some cities don't even do the street closure?
They have street closure associated fees, but for a fee specific for a film permit, they don't charge.
What types of activities might you have city staff go check out for one of these permits? Like you mentioned, or somebody mentioned something about like noise variance for like fake gunshots, or even using like maybe city communications to let people know, hey, there's gonna be a production, these streets are gonna be closed? Like what would that be in staff time and cost? That's kind of, I guess, what I'm trying to hone in on.
I mean, I think it's gonna, just like it's different for every special event, I think it would be different for every film production. You know, closing down Main Street is a pretty big undertaking, so you know, traffic control is involved in that, PD is involved in that. You know, things like fireworks and pyrotechnics, we're gonna want to make sure fire is out there to inspect. I think fire has some sort of fire permit if you're doing something like that, or some sort of approval process. I don't exactly know what that is. And then in terms of like sanitation and those kind of things. So again, it could be wildly drastically different depending on when they're shooting, where they're shooting, how long they're shooting.
Okay, well, I kind of like the idea of maybe if it's outside the realm of normal functions, and we'll take a good number of staff hours to help coordinate, I think there should be a fee. But I'm open to hearing what Councilmember Peacock has to say because he's raised his hand.
If, say it's a ten-day-long shoot, are they required to get a permit each of the ten days, or is it one permit? Okay, I just wanted to make sure, yeah, it wasn't cumbersome. You know, twenty-five dollars per permit, it's not like it's a moneymaker or anything. So I, I don't know, I absolutely understand where Councilmember Grant's coming from. We definitely want to cover the cost, but I feel like the financial of the city will see as an impact of somebody filming something here is gonna be greater than twenty-five dollars. And so we just need to figure out a way to get as many of those as possible. I think I would actually prefer if there wasn't a fee.
I think, to your point, like when, like when we do a street closure in our special event way that we've done it now, we're still able to add street closure costs on to, just the base part of the special event doesn't have a fee. One thing they did mention at the workshop, I think what they said is that having a small fee is good because there's a paper trail. And so they like, like it doesn't have to be a big fee, pretty nominal, twenty-five dollars obviously is not covering much, but it's a paper trail for that person who is their location manager that can prove, hey, here's my paper trail. If I got my permit, I have my permission to do that. So I did catch that just kind of in passing with the fee. Sorry, I don't know.
It says, any film or television production event of any size. So Fox twenty-five comes down to interview somebody in their front yard, do they require a film permit? If OU students are trying to do a documentary, do they have to come down here and get a, that's why I definitely don't want the fee. But are we talking about some guy walks out his front door with his iPhone and takes a video? Or what if he's taking a video for, what if he's a streamer? And he's taking a video for the express to stream it and have ten thousand, hundred thousand views? There's a lot of little definition work there that I think we need to, because actually, if we're gonna be charging or making OU students come down here, or Fox forty-five, Channel Five, just to do a news interview, not completely against it.
That's what I wanted your feedback. I mean, the, the definition as broad as possible to encompass as many types of events, so we can attract as many events as possible. And so if we want to leave, you know, the, we could do things with the fee specifically, and maybe have a tiered system if you're want, if that's something council is thinking about. We could do things with the fee instead of just kind of the broader definition. That way, all types of film and television activities can come, but different tiers maybe have to pay certain prices.
Councilmember Nash?
Yeah, so I think, kind of, to Councilmember Peacock's point, that as low of a fee as possible, you know, to encourage, like ideally the big productions to come in, it might film some kind of movie or something, might then generate some kind of fanfare that will come and just, that creates its own tourism, you know, there. Beyond that, then to Councilmember Ball's point on the smaller scale, almost obnoxious or nuisance requests, like for little streamers to go out and do stuff, we can look at that fees being sort of a barrier to, you know, like the production should be so high before we, you know, should really burn the neighborhood with clicking signatures to see, to get their consent and to move forward. If that's something even as small as, I think, fifty, fifty dollars would then keep those smaller things from having to come forward all the time to, or wanting to come forward all the time to make little streams or whatever they do.
We, when we were down in Chickasha, one, Chickasha had a set down there that was most, a half a block, I guess it was, that was in there that was part of the tornado problem. And their problem was the traffic, because everybody wanted to be a looky-loo, and you had to keep them far, far enough apart so that they didn't beep horns or talk or do something like that. And I'm with you on the idea of no, for most, no. For a large production, I could see what you're saying. It's gotta be graduated if we're, if we get Twister in here or something like that. That's all supposition. I would imagine the most of them are gonna be small, little, itty-bitty films that aren't gonna, we're not even gonna know, it's just a matter of doing it. And the idea of having a twenty-five buck thing for that to, just to make sure of the mark. In construction, you, you take your permit and you post it so that the inspector can see that you're doing it. They could do the same thing. They can post it on there or something. Yes, ma'am?
I was thinking more like, like this isn't about the news and smaller ones, and actually I think the news doesn't have to operate on a permit system whatsoever because of First Amendment. But I was thinking too, kind of to the point of like, what about a film fest? And somebody doing a twenty-four-hour film festival where, you know, you go out and shoot, and you edit, and then you screen. OKC and others have had it. I would imagine something like that might be interested in a permit, because again, this is kind of about the use and the intensity of that use for film purposes. So I do like the idea of a paper trail. I am thinking about like what we do in a large-scale production, something that might be months-long, and, you know, again, thinking about that sliding scale of like, if it's a months-long thing, we might think about having maybe what Tulsa has as far as range. What was that, like twenty-five to two hundred, if I remember correctly?
Yes, yeah, about thirty-something to two hundred. And I don't know what the parameters are.
I could imagine for like a twenty-four-hour film fest, that could just be like a twenty-five permit fee so we all understand. And the film fest can say, hey, we have a permit to do this, we're allowed to be all over the city shooting our little shorts. So, yeah, anyways, that's it for me.
Can you go back like two or three slides where she has the slide about if the film includes shooting or loud arguments? See, maybe if we did something that, you know, if your production includes, you know, nudity, firearms weapons, night shoots, things like this, requires a street closure, then you'll be required to get a permit. If it's two OU students or Fox twenty-five coming down, then I don't want to burden them with getting one. So if we could do something like that, I'd all for it, especially to bring the extra money in and graduate, you know, you'd have a lot of these things going on, you know, two hundred dollars.
Right. And so, and what I'll say is like, when, when they're filling out these things, if they answer yes to those, it might trigger additional requirements, fees, permits, you know, just to.
I really think they should have to include some of this for them even to, like I said, I don't want to burden a OU student or a high school kid who wants to make a documentary for class.
Yeah, I mean, they go through the questions and answer, no, there's no street closure, no, there's no noise, then, you know, there's a lot of special events that call us and say, okay, well, we're doing this, do I need a permit? And I'll say, nope, you don't, you're good. So usually I've had communication with the person, the applicant at least for special events, before they ever start this process, so.
Yeah, I was thinking something similar in terms of like working with OU, just because, you know, at dealer college, like they're doing all kinds of different filming, and some of it's with like OU nightly and some like, and they may be wanting to do some news things, like I'm not thinking about that, but there may be a conversation about like if this is a student project for a school that we, that's like a carve-out specifically for them, that's not, because I think the intent of this is really for those larger scale productions, things that might be coming here that like we want to attract, like Hollywood level films, or even like the indie stuff, or other things. So, yeah, I think having a trigger for those things would be smart.
Councilmember Holman?
So would it apply to if it was in, like if there was a production studio and it's all indoors? I could see them not needing to have a permit for that. To me, it would seem to only apply if they're having to use public facilities or our streets. So if there was enclosed in a studio or like Lloyd Noble Center or something, it probably wouldn't, the intent wouldn't be that they need to come get that.
Correct, right. And Lloyd Noble, we wouldn't permit anyways because it's a real.
Right. I was gonna ask it, so there's at least two movies I know of that were filmed, and a part of Twister was, but, so the Turkey Bowl in twenty seventeen eighteen, and then Rise and Walk, The Dennis Bird Story. I remember them filming at the football stadium for, seemed like a couple of weeks back in the early nineties, and the lights were on all night. So I'm assuming with the stadium, there wouldn't have been anything. How, I know with the Turkey Bowl, though, they did use a park to film, or it might have been a piece of private property that they used to film their games, so do, did we require them that, they were here for a month or so at least?
I think, I think that was in Lions Park, they rented the park from, the park department.
They did, and I actually was, worked with that group when they came in. We had, because they did do some night shoots, and they did, they were here for a couple of weeks, you know. They did have some, paid for some off-duty officers for security, and so yes, they, we did work with them on street closures and all of that. And most of these companies, I get reached out to all the time, and probably Sarah does now more so than I, but from some of film companies wanting to know if we need, if they need a permit to come, even just come shoot B-roll stuff down here or whatever. So they're, they're used to doing that and checking with cities and, but yes, anything that that large of a production, the Turkey Bowl was kind of a big deal.
Yeah, yeah. There were some very name actors that were in and were here for that time. So they only had, they paid to rent the park. Did we, did they have to, was there anything else permit-wise they had to get?
Just the street closures, they got the street closures. I think they got noise variance, too, for some of the shooting was at night. So, yeah, they did have noise variance, street closure, and then they paid themselves for the off-duty security, but.
Okay. Well, I'd be interested in, yeah, there being some sort of threshold where, like, yeah, I don't, people filming something that's a local thing, or I wouldn't see necessary, but a big production's coming into town, and they're gonna be here, and they're gonna be using stuff like that, I could see it. But I'd want to keep it low, too, at the same time. You're saying the fee is per day, or is that vary between?
I don't know. The answer's not.
Okay. So I can see it being like a twenty-five dollar fee, but that covers this amount of time. Where you, they tell us what timeframe they're using, maybe it's based off that, I don't know, but something where it's, I'd rather it probably be like a flat one instead of like, it's gonna cost you a hundred dollars a day to be here. Because I think we do want to incentivize them to be here, and I agree with Councilmember Peacock, and that they'll, like when the Turkey Bowl was filmed here, the cast and crew came to the deli a bunch, and they spent a lot of money. And so, and I know that that wasn't the only business they were going to while they're here, and they were staying in hotels the whole time in. So I think there's a lot to gain from that, where we would make it up, so. So I'd be okay with a fee, but some kind of threshold where it's, we're not asking anybody that wants to film anything to come down here.
Councilmember Peacock, you still have a question?
Yeah, I just, in regards to street closures, we do those, do we have to go and collect business owner's signature currently? Is that like when Norman Music Fest shuts down, okay, so are we gonna require that as part of this process as well, to actually go and get business owner's signature? Okay. Even if it's for a thirty-minute shoot in a back alley, or it's, you know?
Well, I don't know if alleys are classified differently than streets in a street closure process. If it's a short type thing, sometimes you can just do those with like a couple of police officers, you know, for thirty minutes, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Montoya?
Yeah, so similar to Councilmember Holman and Peacock and others, so I am in favor of a fee, you know, a reasonable, a reasonable fee, you know, something low to incentivize them, you know, to come and produce films and such here in Norman. And so there's like the fee part for the applications and the trigger, you know, and the paper trail. And then are we going to submit, model it similar to Norman Music Festival where we charge any city services back to them, like sanitation? Okay.
It would be Visit Norman, but like say it is a bigger production and they need hotel rooms, do we incentivize, like, oh, you know, get a block of them at a discounted rate if you do your production here for X amount of months?
I would assume Visit Norman will help facilitate those types of deals with the hotels, yeah. They do it for conventions, similar.
And they typically reach out to them first. That's who they contact when they want to know if there is a permit, and they refer them to us, so.
Okay.
Oh, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Can waivers be built into, would they have to be built into this language, or can they be designed after codification, like where to put it in waivers if we're educational?
A fee waiver or a permit waiver?
A fee waiver.
Yeah. We could structure that if you wanted to. I think, kind of just hearing your feedback, I think maybe a best course of action, taking in all of your positions, is maybe, you know, looking at industry standards of, or definition of what a large-scale production event would be, kind of defining that, and maybe put a twenty-five dollar fine on that, and, and everything else is just, there's no fee associated specifically for the film permit, but if they're gonna street closure, then they have that associated fee, noise variance associated fee. Is that kind of a good direction to move in?
And that would actually be the graduation itself of the fees, because if you're just gonna be down there shooting stuff and you're not disturbing anybody, don't care. I mean, it just, I think that'll self-regulate. One of the comments that was made was LA had gotten so expensive on permits that it was making it hard for them because they'd gotten, there wasn't an incentive to do it. It was all, it's so hard to work with the system. This is simple. This, this is easy. I commend you guys for getting it. I think you've got it.
I'd also recommend that commercials be exempt, because our business owners already paid enough money operating here in Norman with everything else to do. And if they're advertising to bring people to Norman, to our community to shop, I don't think they should have to pay a fee for that.
Local commercials?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. I remember an Oklahoma City example where there was a major commercial shot in downtown Oklahoma City years ago, and it was street closure, big deal, big, big famous people. It was fun.
Thank you for that feedback. I'll draft it, a fee that way, and you can see that language when it goes to first reading. And then the last change. And then, the last change substantively is just allowing for street closures to be kind of an entire street closure for a limited duration, that way films are able to kind of prevent the free flow of unwanted passengers, you don't have random people in their scenes, and then, I just have kind of pictures up here of those specific changes, so you're not having to flip through the pages of, you know, updating the definition, allowing, you know, accounting for this new film permit that you have to apply for, and then, that limited-duration street closure. And then, the last changes throughout this is just kind of doing a good, needed update, making it gender-neutral.
Thank you for that.
Yes, the numbering throughout the entire ordinance is very inconsistent, sometimes it was written out, sometimes it was just a number, sometimes it was one or the other, not both, so, making it written out in words first, then number in parentheses, and then same thing, kind of consistency-wise, reorganize a little bit of the sections to make it clear to read, and then numbering schemes were off, internal references were off, I think just different changes, we didn't, you know, cross-reference correctly, so, upitting all that, and then commas, articles, random things to make it clear and concise.
We've done disgusted.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is follow-up on the litter control program, Miss Michelle Ladenbaum.
Hi.
Hi.
You know my struggles with technology, so. All right, so, let's talk about the responses, well, actually, let's talk about the choice that the committee made, the RFP, review committee made, from the responses that we received for the RFP, For the Better Way, no, or Opportunity Knox was my title, but, that's all right, like I said, it was a place.
Guys, we're just happy at work.
Oh, yeah, and just to remind you, I left the background up here, how the litter control program began, how it was originally funded, et cetera, you'll recall, the map right there was all of the identified priority routes for picking up litter, Thunderbird Watershed is also, has BMPs that include litter control within them. The RFP asked for nonprofit organizations to send us a plan for what they would like to do, to provide litter control with, with folks who are vulnerable, and also to provide a low-barrier employment opportunity with wraparound services, so that was primarily what we were asking. And, the committee chose, we got two responses, and the committee chose Mental Health Association of Oklahoma, primarily for these reasons, and, they have many in-house services already within their program umbrella, so they already have mental health recovery services, outreach and prevention services, they have a center and pro bono counseling services, they already do employment services, especially in Tulsa, they have a, an emergency response program that they do in Tulsa, like what we were looking at, or what you guys were considering to divert away from 911, they do all of those kinds of things, they also have, which was kind of neat to me, a contract with the Department of Rehabilitation Services to provide employees for, for jobs, so, they have quite a bit of interconnected contacts and programs already that we were looking at, and that's, that's primarily why they got it. So, Empowering People and Beautifying Norman is what they headlined it for, right, you can see in the picture at the top, that is actually the van that they have wrapped, that they use in Oklahoma City, and you can see, it says Real Change for Panhandling, and it says Better Way, so, and then, these are actual participants in the Tulsa program on the bottom, so I tried to get both programs shown. They would have a roving van, the van that we talked about, the Pro Master van that we would provide, they do want accessible, they do like the idea that it's accessible for people with disabilities, because they think they can reach out to that population as well, they would rove to areas of concentrated vulnerability, and that would be directed by, by staff, what we know, where we've seen vulnerable folks, et cetera, and, it's eight members per day, eight participants, that is based on the amount of people we can fit in the van, so they can fit eight people, and the, the case manager, and the van driver within the van, and so that's what we can do, they do have three days per week picking up litter, $65 per day is the wage that they offer, it's a cash wage, so I know that was a question before, they pay cash at the end of the day, it's three days per week, the other two days are when those services are provided, but we'll get into that in a minute. Works, experience, of course, I think you get a feeling, I did a cleanup this weekend, right, because it's spring, guess what, we clean up, and, there's something about seeing an area that has been trashed, or is littered, and then seeing it after you do the, the clean, the work, there's some kind of, I don't know, it's a sense of accomplishment, I like it, so, that's tied into it as well, and soft-scale development, you know, I kind of mentioned that when I was talking about the RFP and what we were looking at, some folks, just, they don't know how to interact with people, or they've been away from people long enough that they don't have that, that skill set, where you can, you know, talk to people, or, or understand a work situation, et cetera, so that's part of it as well. Lunch is provided with this service, and during lunch, that's when the case manager meets with each of the clients, and determines, or ascertains where they need other services and skills, and like I said, the next two days are the services, so, these are the support services that they provide, they have the case manager that is, will be dedicated to the group, who will find services and help get, one of the big ones is permanent housing, low-barrier permanent housing, that's important, and then also permanent stable job services, so I like that, you guys probably like that too, they will be able to, so there's, they have a set of employees, which I'll show you, some staffing, one of those is the van driver, and I mentioned that one specifically, because for three days a week, right, he drives the van, he or she drives the van, but the other two days, they provide service, transportation to those things that are important to get, to get services, like IDs, right, it's surprising how many people don't have access to their own driver's license, or state ID, maybe they didn't have a driver's license, a birth certificate, you know, the things that you need, social security card, you know, all of these things we take for granted, so they can help do that as well. It's confidence, that's, I really like that line that they put in their RFP response, so I thought I would put it, confidence in essential life skills that help bolster that permit, it's really hard to go in an interview, I'm sure you guys all know, right, you go in and you're having a bad day, or you're not feeling, maybe you had a fight with somebody earlier in the day, and you're in the, and you can't, you know, you don't have the confidence to do, and so you perform poorly, well, imagine if you didn't have any confidence at all, I can't, I can't even tell them, so, I like that. Here are the outcome goals, what they're willing to benchmark, their minimums, they think that at least 10%, this is what they've experienced in Tulsa and Oklahoma City, they're, they run the programs in both of those cities, 10% of the folks who actually enroll in the job program, because they think that they'll be able to put others in the job program, not just the eight participants on the daily van, because they plan to speak to at least 200 individuals per calendar year, and while they're doing that, they want to get the folks they can into the cleaning program, but also see what other services they can do.
What does that mean, job program?
So, what that means is, part of what, they can either join A Better Way, and get on the bus and do a daily litter, they also have, like I said, those wraparound employment services, they have contracts with DRS, et cetera, they're gonna network with business owners here in the city, to have ways for folks to get into jobs, whether they participate in A Better Way or not, so, there are, that's one of the things they said they would do. 25% of the people who participate in the job program and finish it out, they think will actually have stable employment, so that's pretty good, and they think that 25% will access, so, when I say wraparound services, of course, you know, you, you don't say, hey, you're gonna do this, right, you can't do that to people, that's not how that works, right, you offer it, so they're gonna be offered, they're not gonna be like, okay, now you have to do this, but, but it's offered, and they think at least a quarter of the people that they offer it to will participate in the other services, including the permanent housing, they did say it can take three to six interactions with people to build the trust to get somebody to join, so that's something to consider as well, and they do, they'll submit monthly and semi-annual reports, that of course, you would be able to see, and see what the progress is. Okay, so that's all the cool stuff, wow, Michelle, you always impress us with these great things, right? But, there's always a cost, right, so let's look at that, here's a cost, so, for the three days per week litter crew pickup with the wraparound services, their total expense, what they offer to us is $360,368 per year, and, there are some other costs that will be associated with the program that I've highlighted in the green here, and, for instance, we need to provide a trailer, you know, there's some talk, we probably have one somewhere that we can provide, so that may not really be a huge outlay, but the rake, shovels, grabbers, that's a thing, we need to wrap the van, we're providing the van, and, the gas and maintenance for the van, I just, today, I didn't get a chance to really look at it, but I got the pull-down from Oklahoma City, and from 2021 to today, they drove 15,000 miles, so that kind of gives you an idea, at least, you know, roughly what they do, but that's longer, of course, what, about three years, two and a half, and, and then centrally-located office space, so, I mean, we've done quite a bit of rehabbing of our city facilities, but, still tight, so that will be a thing to consider.
So, wrapped up in this conversation about, you know, where the shelter is right now, and the other office space that could potentially be available, with, we're talking about maybe upgrading that building, like, that might be a space where they could centrally-locate an office that would be directly connected to the population that we're trying to serve, just throwing it out there.
Councilmember Gray?
I also like that, and also thank you for all of this, because it's kind of where I was hoping this was headed, but my question that I didn't see answered was, where do they plan to do pickups, do they plan to go by the jail, because, all those things that you mentioned, with connection to housing, job services, is in SAMPA's Key Elements to Reentry for People Leaving Prison with Substance and Mental Health Issues, so, where are they gonna go?
So, what they said, and that's why I said hotspots of vulnerability, so what does that mean, that means wherever, wherever we think we be in the city, so that's what they will rely on, is where we ask them to go, so that's the plan, is they would ask us where we think they should go to pick up folks in Oklahoma City, what they do is they, they rove around and pick up panhandlers, we, you know, anecdotally, I don't have numbers or metrics on it, so I can just tell you qualitatively, but, we don't have a huge panhandling issue in Norman, I mean, I haven't seen, I've seen it here and there, but not huge, so what they would rely on is, is us telling them where to go, so if that's a place, then we could put it down.
There's also a, in, at the street, in Lindsay Yard, if you look over on the west side of that building, there is this one room all by itself.
That's true.
And that used to be the room that we had the litter crews coming out of, so that they didn't have to mix with the.
Interesting.
Guys, and so, that's a place, you'd have a place to lock up the van, that it was safe at night.
And the gate, I love that gate.
The whole idea, they'd just have to drive from Lindsay Yard up here, which, three miles, two miles, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, I'm thinking jail, shelter, the other part got me offbeat with the, where to park the van, um.
I'd say known encampments.
Yeah, that would be a good spot, shelter, proper.
Salvation Army has a big parking lot.
That one.
It'd be a building.
I have started making kind of a thoughtless, brainstorm list, but, absolutely, send ideas.
It's a big place, I mean, that, that's probably the thing.
These costs are 80/20, so what does that mean, 80% of the costs that they provided us are for the, the wraparound, the social, so 20% would be what they're budgeting for actual litter control, and there's a reason I said that, but we'll get to that in a minute. Is that it on this slide? No, no? Yeah.
Yes, sir. When can we make this reality? If we voted yes to prove this, how, how quick could we actually see this in action?
Councilmember Baller, jump in the car.
Okay.
Next slide.
Go ahead, go to seat.
Councilmember Gray, Marsh, April. I was just, the fringe costs, what exactly, is that just projected overrun, or?
Benefits, benefits.
Okay.
It's pretty typical.
Okay.
Do they pre-sense standard of percentage?
This is exact, well, this is the same, I'm just gonna let you know, I've looked at Tulsa and Oklahoma Cities, this is what they charge them, so.
Okay, so, the case, the, I'm sorry, the manager, program manager.
There we go.
They would be just managing our program?
No, so the program manager would be over, I think she's over all the, and that's why it's only.
So that would be our portion of her.
Right.
Their salary.
There, I think, I say her, because I'm pretty sure it's a her, but that's why.
Whoever it may be.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Now, the case manager would be for this program, specifically, the van driver is tasked to this program, the employment specialist is actually shared, but, during those days, would be tasked to the program.
Okay, so that program manager's overseeing potentially Oklahoma City, Tulsa, or wherever else has this, all right.
Okay, so funding, that's why I mentioned it, right, I would say, just so you know, don't forget, utilities, sanitation, got the litter program from Public Works, not too long ago, April, right, because that's when doers came into me, woo, so that's $50,000, okay, that's what we have allocated in utilities, why do I even, because, don't forget, utilities is also an enterprise fund, right, and so we have to focus on those services that we provide to our paying customers, and that's why I broke it down in the 2080, when I said there's a thing, right, so 20% of the cost is actually $72,073.60, which is actually on par essentially, not saved dollars, is the very first allocation, right, and then the other 80% is $288,294.40, I know that, I think, I don't think they'd be happy, but I think we could make a case to our utilities guys, hi, for that 20%, right?
I'm sorry, Chris.
Don't we have a sanitation rate coming?
No, right now, it's holding tough, but, I worry, if we overspend in that budget, I will have to come back for a rate increase.
What are the ones that we have currently, like, on the horizon, was it wastewater?
Yes, wastewater is the one that needs one first.
People are solid waste.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, on that same line, whenever a sanitation rate increase might be needed, could funding this program be one of the things that we ask the voters, say, is this a service you'd want, and part of this rate increase would be to fund this service, and then voters could decide if that's something they want to fund, or, but it's something that could be funded entirely by sanitation, if voters.
Right.
Were to approve funding to do it through that.
That would be fair.
So it could possibly be, maybe we fund this through the general fund or something, until that comes up, and then, if it's successful, then we could say to voters, hey, we'd like to make this program permanent, or whatever, and, if you vote yes on this, we'll be able to fund it.
And by that time, we'd have metrics.
Yeah.
We could say their work.
Exactly.
So that could be one way.
How many tons of materials have been removed from the environment?
That could be one way, we're not encumbering the general fund.
Yeah.
Every year forever, and gets, and would get something out of it, and have maybe a positive selling point for why voters might need to increase the sanitation rate, and it has been over a decade since the last one, so I think we're good stewards of it.
And we're generally moving solid waste, I mean, it's, it's not something other than that, trash.
Yeah, so I think that could be a path through long-term program, that's how it gets done.
Councilmember Peacock? Yeah, just support that idea.
I mean, it's not something other than that, it's trash.
Yeah, so I think that could be a path through long-term program, that's how it gets done.
Councilmember, Pecan?
Yeah, just support that idea. I think my only heartburn with this program is the year-to-year exposure to the general fund, and so if there's a secondary source that picks this up, I mean, that takes that one piece of heartburn away, so.
Chris gets it. Catch Chris.
You guys have tissues?
Just, yeah, just because twenty percent of the cost is really trash. Eighty percent is services, like soft-side services, so we just always want to make sure, like, water pays for water, sewer pays for sewer, trash pays for, no, not, trash pays for soft services, that stuff, so. Appreciate every comment, but just wanted to kind of throw that out there.
Makes sense.
That's a good point.
Well, and our opportunity to seek grant funding to address the service side, federal grants, state grants, grants from other foundations, et cetera, and developing metrics for those services adds value to those applications when we seek it.
I forgot one thing, because you just reminded me. That's actually a really good point, because that's one of the things that Mental Health Association of Oklahoma also said they were gonna do, is go after more funding to see if they could help support it, too. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, so the funding, you know, to the comment about, you know, a general fund exposure year over year, I think that, I mean, we don't have the data yet, but I would argue that this program is actually gonna save us money as a city in several areas. I mean, one being litter and thinking about the clear, clearing of our stormwater channels and like, things like that, like, that's, that's a benefit to the service. And then also the wraparound service, how comprehensive they are, I think is gonna be a real benefit to communities that we've been really trying to target and outreach to, and to bring them into jobs and into permanent housing and getting mental health, and so like, I, I think it's gonna be a benefit overall, and so like, keeping some of those metrics, I think will be really help, helpful to justify the expense that we're having, you know, year over year, but I think, in the long run, I think it's gonna save the city money, personally.
Yeah, I just want to second that, having seen people fall through the cracks and cost the city thousands of dollars, definitely see long view on this one.
Does anybody disagree with this? Hearing none. You did the normally excellent job that you always do.
But I love to bring you guys fun stuff. You know I hate it when it's bad.
Yeah.
Michelle hates to be a bummer.
I do hate to be a bummer. I mean, I'll be a bummer, but I hate it.
Oh, don't be a bummer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Item number three, discussion regarding City of Norman facilities improvement. Doctor Fund.
By the way, I'm just being a white tonight, hitting forward on the awesome PowerPoint.
Talk a little about the automatic logic that we use for HVAC. It's provided through ES2 Company. What is automated logic? It optimizes our building performances. We control air conditioning, lighting to the buildings. You know, we do a pretty good job now, especially if we remodel these buildings of, if they're occupied, what temperatures we keep it at, we set set points, you know, plus or minus five, or two and a half either way. All these things help reduce the cost of energy that we're, that we consume. The easiest thing probably that on this program that we use this logic is it's an easy program. When I go in and look at it, it's very visual, and it shows me what fans are running, what aren't running. If there's an issue somewhere in the system, I get red flags, it'll, it'll turn red for me. You can diagnose almost all of your problems from the computer screen. So when you call out your HVAC guys, whether it's our internal guys or someone else, we have a pretty good idea of what the problem is, just by looking at the program. Program that we use is provided by ES2, is free, once we get into it and put the, the system on our, on all of our air conditionings and things like that, there's no more fees. Training's also provided free for the City of Norman. Myself, Blake, and Tara all went to training about a month ago, three weeks ago. It's a two-day training to go through. Fantastic training, but it's, it's just an easy system to use and an easy system to understand. Maintain comfort and productivity. Like on this building, since we're gonna be in here tonight, clicked on it, kept it occupied until ten o'clock tonight, so the temperature will stay comfortable. One thing we finally kind of got smart about, instead of getting cold, saying, hey, the rooms are hot, they have a nice calendar that tells what's going on in these rooms. We finally got smart enough to say, can we have access to that? So hopefully you guys won't have any more hot meetings and things like that, we're kind of getting ahead. Figuring, yeah, figuring a few things out. The system's easy, just like this, if we're sitting in the office and I want to look, I could click on this room and it'd tell me it was occupied, what the temperature was, what the lighting is. It's just, it's just an easy program, and then it gets into some huge cost savings that we'll see. Personally, we have it on central library, building A, B, C, and D, east library, the NIC, and animal welfare is partially on it, that system. It's a little different system over there, so I'm limited.
IFAC and adult wellness as well.
Yeah, IFAC and adult wellness, they'll be on it, they're still working out their kinks, getting the program setting, then they'll hand it over to us once they get all the balance reports done. So we kind of get it after the construction guys get all their things done. The balancing is something usually takes a little time for everything to get used to, but, yeah, all the new buildings we have have this logic on them. We're also adding them to three fire stations currently. Next year, we're gonna add them to three more fire stations, so we can control them. So we're, you know, we're looking at to get a control, a hold of all this stuff, just because of the, the cost savings we're seeing. We kind of went through, we went back five years and started looking at how much usage each building was using. So we use a lot of kilowatt hours in these buildings. This gives us a two-year breakdown. We went all the way back to five, then brought it back to two. And then on our next one, again, it's just kind of our total for this year, for 2023, how much we used. And I think the big thing that we really found out as we started looking at these, central libraries is one I'm gonna brag on, in one year, once we got familiar with the program, Wade was in charge of this program then, and really got, said, hey, we need to look at this building, how can we really control this building the way it's used? Thirty thousand dollar savings in one year, just by using this program. I know that's a big building, it's occupied a lot, it has a lot of neat things, but learning this program and utilizing it to the best is providing us a huge cost savings.
Piggyback on that, as well as that we've also given our users in our offices or in their areas more, more freedom to adjust their temperature to their liking, so in the summer, we keep it at seventy-two as our average temperature. Some people, you know, everybody feels a little bit different, but you have the ability to go in there and change it five degrees in either direction. And the same thing, winter, we keep it at sixty-eight, normal heaters, so if you need to go in there and pump it up, is this whoever in your area, office, or sometimes we have blocks of offices connected, so I feel bad for whoever's connected to me, because I like it cold all the time, so.
We override him sometime.
Our savings for 2023, this is what we're seeing after, Bob Blatchett is, is one of our HVAC guys, has really gotten into this program, so we're able to look at his, what he would, had done in the year prior and to this year of 2023. And just by working with the system, we started seeing our savings that they were able to do. We didn't do it off cost, because cost goes ups and downs, we just did it on kilowatt hours, but then we turned it back around to show our cost value later on. Seventy-four thousand, six seventeen is what we saved on all of them for last year.
Thank you.
And I, and I see that this will continue to get better in some ways as we get used to it. The one thing we have found, the one person that's cold all the time and keeps a heater on in their, in their office affects our system. We find that. I don't know how to cure that yet, but it, it does read it, because it is very sensitive, but a heater in one office will throw that block off sometimes. So they'll say, but my office is cold, but the person actually who has a heater going and it's heating that room up, we're seeing it, and the computer's saying it's fine. So we're trying to, and ES2 is working on trying to help us work through that, and we'll see what, what comes of it there. They're gonna have some good ideas.
We're gonna make little tornadoes if we keep having these-
Yes, I'm telling you, it's pretty crazy. And add a little bit on top of this, like when we had a extreme cold come in a few weeks ago, we were scared, what happens if the, it was on a long holiday weekend, we're like, what happens if, and we've experienced it before, if we have frozen pipes or not be able to do that? So we left the building in occupied mode over that weekend, and then we have our Lance and, and Blake and some of our techs constantly checking that to make sure that, that the heating's up and running, and they can do that from home, and if they, if they see on a part of the computer that one of the HVACs have gone out, they can deploy somebody to, to get that done and make sure that we don't have any, small little emergencies happen with that.
And one thing, when we pull up the program on each building, it'll give us a color code. Of course, red's always danger something's wrong, to blues and greens, it shows that it's in a normal range. So even just pulling up, it takes five minutes to go through all of our buildings, because all you're looking for is that red block somewhere, so it's, it's an easy program.
Not to get too far ahead of the slides, and if you're gonna cover this, just stop me, but I saw on an earlier slide, it was fifteen thousand dollars per building to install this.
And we're from ten, ten to fifteen, depending on how many units are on there.
That's a one-time cost.
One-time cost.
So for these eight buildings we're talking about, we spent about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and we saved seventy-five in one year.
Yes, sir.
And we'll save seventy-five next year and the year after.
Okay. Yes.
Pretty short track. It's a lot of money, really quick.
Yeah, it, it does well. You know, keeping the, the buildings in occupied mode, watching the buildings, you know, is there a three-day holiday? You know, if you had it set up and it ran on a Monday, when you didn't have something there, it's, it's amazing just that one day, all the units running, how much cost we can save if we can shut those units back down. You know, we're upgrading our buildings, you know, the remodel's already getting LED lights. One thing I'm looking at is going into more of our buildings and getting LED lights. This program is also, if we put the system in, it's another inexpensive, we can control the lighting, too, so we can shut the lights off in the building, we can, you know, set them to, to do the sunrise and sundown, so they can do things. Just all those little things, you know, save energy. If we can keep those lights down, keep the LED systems going, it's helpful. One other thing we're looking at, it might be in a slide, I can't remember what I stuck in there.
Is that what you're looking?
Yeah, that's it. Lighting generators also, and, and I'm looking at the generators on our campus right now will be hooked into the system, hopefully by, by summer. That also gives us a look at, are we ready, are storms coming? You know, maybe, you know, they always forecast now, three days out, we got storms coming. We can, so just send in a tech out and checking, you know, everything takes time, we can actually go on and check and make sure the batteries are charged, that the generator will fire up, that it has fuel in it. If they are running, we can check what kind of kilowatts they're putting out. This also runs into our system with the automatic logic. If we do have something go down, maybe a tornado goes through, what buildings do we need to make sure the air conditioning is working on for you in shelter? We can do it from the laptop, as long as we can get connection. And we can go log into it with the computer, plug into the system, and do it there if we need to. But it'll just give us a world of, of information. I'm not the, I'm getting older, and I'm finding that sometimes computer programs get frustrating to me. This one is not, it's extremely easy. It's easy to, to go through, it's easy to understand. It's just an easy system, and I don't write codes, I'm, I'm looking at learning that, but Bob, that works for us in our HVAC, he can write the codes, so if he's seeing an issue in an area, he can rewrite the codes for that, so that building cools or heats a little bit differently. He kind of took the library on with Wade's urging, we need to do something over there, how can we control this? They're always complaining, and they have a right to complain if things aren't right. And he's the one that changed a lot of the program from the initial engineering's programming, saved us thirty thousand dollars in a year. By him listening to the people, what was going on in the building, he changed it, and we saw savings, so.
Two, as we grow, grow this program, and kind of like Lance was talking, we connect to those generators, especially in emergency situations, if, if it's freezing weather, tornadoes, or different kinds of emergencies, we, we know and make sure that our emergency personnel will have those generator backups, and we'll be able to tell if there's anything wrong with the generator or fuel all by remotely. And I think that's very key to make sure, especially as the EOC comes online, to make sure that we know a little bit more about that building as, and they can take care of it from a remote, instead of having to go out there and necessarily doing in emergency situations, because sometimes you don't know what kind of emergency it has, if it's icy roads or tornado, we're gonna have problems getting there, so we just need to know how, how big of an emergency it is, and figure out how high up the priority, we need to make sure that beforehand and during the emergency, that we, we keep those generators up and running.
Councilmember, Pecan?
I was just gonna ask if there's a monitoring session at the EOC. I should stop asking questions.
All right. Yes, sir.
Don't we have a pretty good rate with OGN the city?
In our franchise agreement, there's a component, we get X number of kilowatt hours for free, we get to apply them against meters in the city.
And I know they already have all kinds of home efficiency, you know, programs they do with, have we reached out to them to see if they-
We have.
Do any kind of thing with this kind of program?
I've met with them twice, we met with them again just the other day, and Daryl's part of that. I started reaching out to them, because they have incentives for lighting, and they also have incentives for HVACs, and, and I'm signing up for, for both, trying to get what I can. One of the things they have is, I can call them out to any of the HVACs, they'll come out, diagnose them, clean them, and tell us, hey, this system's running ninety percent, eighty percent, whatever, and if it's like below eighty percent, they'll say, we can give you X amount of rebate if you have to replace this unit, you know, with a, with a different SEER. Also, as we go forward with building, buildings, or revamp, and we can give them, we just found this out the other day, we can give them a copy of those plans, they'll take their engineers and go through, and they'll make recommendations of what mechanical equipment to use to help save, save costs, energy and initial cost.
That goes along with our franchise agreement?
Yes, and it's all free.
March fifth.
And we have done that with all of these projects. I received rebate back for Dell Development Center, the processing, the one now for municipal court, and so we will, we do it with all of them, and they do review the plans, they-
It saves us even more money than what's showed up there, so, great. And we're working with them, and I think, I'd like to throw Chris on the bus, because he has, his buildings are the highest energy usage buildings that we have, and as we're communicating with them, yeah, we're-
They're gonna come out with three engineers and look at our project, right in our specifications, and we'll go to these efficiency motors, blowers, at our wastewater plant, at our water plant, they're gonna give us these rebates, free cash, they're coming out free to do the, the engineering on the front end, so we're, we're open doors, excited to see them come down.
But we'll still be the high shooters.
Twenty-four hours, seven days a week, three sixty-five, yeah.
Just so I can brag on these guys, when we hire the right people in the right jobs, they, they know things we don't know. The, the whole concept of how we currently maintain our generators, and Lance and his team, there's a better way to maintain our generators, more cost-effective, right sizing our, our workforce, you know, do we outsource all that, or man, it's cheaper if we had our guy, and then it's our guy in the event of an emergency who can go in there and refuel those generators and keep them up and running. So the business model's changing a little bit, we're gaining some efficiencies, and I think we'll, like you're seeing here, we're gonna be tough to, tough to beat, but we got good people on board. Amen. All right, well, thank you, guys. All right. Next item, consideration of adjourning into executive session is authorized by Oklahoma statutes twenty-five, three oh seven B four, to discuss pending class action litigations against three M company and E.I. DuPont and Nemours, and company and, and other defendants involving PFAS, I'm not gonna do it, contamination in acquiesce film-forming products liability litigation, and it gives a case number in South Carolina. I entertain a motion to adjourn out of special session and convene into.
Let me do that. I don't know if you heard me this morning, our outside counsel's not able to be here tonight, something came up, and they want to come next week to talk to you about this. There's been some happenings in those cases, and so we want to give you guys an update, another chance to weigh in, but I think it'll actually be rescheduled for next week.
Okay, well, I'd rather withdraw that question, if I may.
Sure.
Okay, well, that's easy, cross it off. We have a real hard problem now. We need to adjourn.
That's item on the agenda.
Thank you all.